Good morning, it is November ninth, two thousand twenty-one. It is now nine AM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'd like to you please rise for the invocation and bled of allegiance from council member Ms. Caroline Henigan.
Father, we thank you for the beautiful weather we've been able to enjoy. At Lord, we ask you that you guide these proceedings. Give us the wisdom and knowledge to be able to receive your blessings upon this city. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Henigan. On the item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one-two-zero-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. Henigan.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Mr. Childs.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken by, from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. At this time, I do not have a name that is on that, on our list. But if there's anyone who would like to address council, please step forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Anyway, I'm Kenneth Cole. I live at sixty-six forty-two Hudson Road in Orange. But I own a property on Fourteenth and Link on the southeast corner. And I would like to put a small trailer park there, but the ordinance code one-two-two thousand said that you gotta have two acres. Hell, I don't know nobody who has two acres of land. I don't. I got point six, but I would like to get that code changed to point five, at least so I could put something there. Because I'm just wasting it. And we got ten thousand people that's gonna be coming to this area for shovel-run expansion. All the outskirts of Orange is making money. And nobody in the inner city is getting anything done. Especially with two acres. Does anybody y'all know somebody in Orange got two acres? I don't know anybody. But if I could get that reduced to point five, I would greatly appreciate it. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Good morning, my name is Carol Scott, Seven Coburn Avenue. And first, I wanna thank everyone that's involved with trying to get their gully cleaned out behind me. I realize there are some things that's not done yet. But I thank you for what you have done toward getting it cleaned out. Now, another thing, I want to see if, I guess I would have to call the city. But the trash, the trustees used to pick it up, but they don't anymore. Is there any way that I can get an extra trash can? And I'll do it as exercise, picking it up, but putting the trash can only out on trash day. I'm asking for it that way because I was told that if I put it in bags, I'll have to pay for each bag that I have out there. So I would rather just see if I can get a can and put that out there, and after I pick it up that Wednesday. Please consider that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Burge. So when I close the citizen comments, thank you. Most people who come up here with a problem usually just state their problem. And you came with a problem and a solution, so that's awesome. I don't know how we're gonna figure it out, but we're gonna figure it out.
Thank you.
So thank you, all right. We'll close citizen comments. City announcements, Mr. Jay Trahan.
Yes, sir. So just two things, Mayor. This is more in the lines of a save the date. The Kiwanis Club of Orange is finalizing details for the annual Christmas parade, which is scheduled for Friday, December third. So I would ask everyone to please note their calendar. The theme this year is a Texas Christmas. Again, Friday night, December third. In addition to that, this is the poster that the C V B staff produced. And in addition to the Kiwanis Christmas Parade, there will be a movie night at the downtown Riverfront Pavilion because it complements the parade route in terms of it being downtown, beginning behind the Luttreth Theater and a rectangle type of route around downtown. So this movie will be featured on the Friday night of the parade. And so we're asking everyone to save the date to not only enjoy the parade, but then make their way down to the Riverfront Pavilion as well. Thank you.
Thank you. What's the movie?
The movie.
The elf.
And then I have to bring up the joint coffee.
At the end.
Okay.
Okay. Onto item number six, consent agenda. September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, planning and zoning commission, city council joint public hearing and regular meeting minutes. September seventh, two thousand twenty-one, special call city council meeting minutes. September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, special call planning and zoning commission meeting minutes. September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, special call city council meeting minutes. And October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. And October twenty-sixth, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion and I believe a second from Mr. Bailey. Mr. Burge.
Aye.
Ms. Henigan.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna.
Aye.
Mr. Childs.
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes on item seven, presentation and discussion of code enforcement policies, practices, and procedures. Mr. Knopf. And Ms. Janham.
I'm still working with Mike Zito.
The TVs?
Just a little bit, just a little.
I'm still working with you. Coaching you.
Right there, there you go.
Stand right there, Paul.
We've been asked to make a presentation on code enforcement, policies, practices, and procedures. So I'd just like to take a little bit of time to do that and kinda give you a brief overview of what all it is that code enforcement involves. So what kind of codes do we enforce? Well, there's seventeen codes that we enforce. Grass and weeds that are twelve inches or taller, or if a property is more than two acres, they only have to maintain a ten-foot perimeter around the property with, under twelve inches. So grass and weed ordinances, debris, trash, and litter ordinances, sign ordinances, all those little bandit signs that pop up along the rights of way and get nailed to telephone poles. And if somebody puts up a sign without a permit, junk vehicles, substandard buildings, parking on the front yard in a historic district, zoning violations, working without a permit, if somebody does a repair or remodel without a permit, we enforce that. Trees or limbs that have been downed, filth or impure matter, fence ordinances where people put up fences without permits or fences in violation of the ordinance, painting a building in the historic district violations. There's only certain colors in the historic district that are allowed. Storage buildings and containers, which, you know, is being studied right now. RV trailer regulations, they have to be in the side yard or the rear yard. Itinerant vendor violations, people setting up food trucks or tents or whatever on a property without a permit. Certificate of appropriateness violations, before they do repair or remodel in the historic districts, they have to have what's called a certificate of appropriation that is either approved by me or by the Historic Preservation Commission. And then basketball goal violations. You can't have a basketball goal out in the street. So we enforce those as well. So there's seventeen code violations that we enforce. Most of those are grass and weeds, trash, litter, and signs and junk vehicles. Pick up the majority of the code violations that we enforce. So just because something is ugly, tacky, or somebody doesn't like it, doesn't mean it's illegal. It can be ugly, it can be tacky, it can, somebody may not like it, but that doesn't mean it's illegal. If you wanna paint your house plus an orange because you're a proud citizen of Orange and you wanna show how proud you are of Orange, you can do it as long as you're not in a historic district. There is no ordinance against that. If you wanna park your car in your front yard, you can do that as long as you're not in a historic district. So the real matter is, some of these ordinances even that we enforce, it depends. It depends on where they are, it depends on the case, it depends on exactly what the facts of the situation are, whether or not it is a violation. So what is our workload, or what is our, our expected workload? There are eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight properties in Orange. If only fifteen percent of those properties were problem properties, that's still one thousand two hundred and fifty-six problem properties in Orange. One thousand two hundred and fifty-six. And plus, Orange is a big city. It's twenty-one square miles. There's a lot of area of Orange that we have to patrol and inspect and, you know, look at. Plus, there are a hundred and forty-one subdivisions currently. We're getting ready to add some more. So there hasn't been any talk about adding more code enforcement officers with these new subdivisions. So we're getting more, we're getting more and more workload for all those eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight properties. So let's do a little math. So one thousand two hundred and fifty-six potential problem properties times seventeen potential violations per property times three hundred and sixty-five days a year equals seven point eight million potential violations. Okay, that's just the problem properties. Okay? If we include all the properties in town, that's about fifty-two point four million potential violations per year. So what do we have to inspect all of them? We have two code enforcement officers in the budget. Right now, we have one vacancy. And then, so Janice, she's gonna be transferring back to the police department at the end of the month. So then Johnny Peter will be transferred back over to code enforcement. So we're down to a code enforcement officer, okay, plus a cleaning clerk. So for one thousand two hundred and fifty-six properties, two code enforcement officers. So let me just kinda relate this to each of you in your own personal situations. I'm not attacking you and I don't need to put you on the spot, but just so you can relate to on your own personal lifestyle. If you have one thousand two hundred and fifty-six customers every day, could you deal with two hairstylists?
No.
If you have one thousand two hundred and fifty-six students every day, could you deal with two teachers?
No.
If you have one thousand two hundred and fifty-six hospice patients every day, could you deal with two workers? If you had one thousand two hundred and fifty-six environmental enforcement every day, could you deal with two operators?
I'd be at McDonald's.
If you had one thousand two hundred and fifty-six lanky sausage customers every day, could you deal with two people?
Oh, no.
If you had one thousand two hundred and fifty-six customers every day, would you be great?
I'd be a drawstring about that many customers. But no, sir, I could not do it.
This ought to be a good one.
If you had one thousand two hundred and fifty-six criminals in Orange every day, could you deal with two hairstylists?
No.
No way.
No. You're understaffed.
That's what we're being.
You're understaffed.
And that's what we're being criticized over is, why can't you resolve all these violations?
We know.
Why can't you resolve all these violations? Why can't you get to my complaint right away? If I reported that morning, that's about all it's up on the act.
Can't happen.
Wow.
Okay, so what many people think should happen? Okay, complaints made, the code enforcement officer immediately tells the property owner to bring the property into compliance. The property owner immediately runs right out there, raises it in compliance, and promises never to do the giving. Seriously, that's what many people think should happen.
Right.
Well, just get on it. Don't they have to clean up that property, they have to move that grass, they have to remove that junk, they do. And that's why they can just get on it right away. Okay? But let me tell you what really happens.
Oh, yeah, we can skip that one.
And this is kinda slow, but slowly, but.
Mm-hmm, there's no point in that.
It gets upside down.
This is what really happens in code enforcement. Okay? It's everything from the complaint being made, identifying who owns the property. One thing that we can get bogged down in that, because sometimes it's not clear who owns the property. You know, it could be that airship, you know, the property owner died.
Right.
Left it without a will. Anybody in the air is going, not by responsibility. You know, so just trying to define who, who does that. And then, you know, so once we do that, and then able to send them the letter, give them an opportunity to correct it. If they don't correct it, then, you know, prepare the citations, then we have to prepare the report. And then, you know, the judge may or may not find him guilty. And they may not assess a fine. But still, we have this little vicious cycle. We have this little vicious cycle from the time the letter's made and all the way to when it's placed on board, either judge trial or jury trial, whatever. And the property owners found guilty, they paid the fine, and the property's still not providing compliance. So then we go back to the beginning, send a letter, go back to who, we should have fined, have a judge or trial, jury. And the property's still not providing compliance. So then we go back to who, and we have this vicious little cycle. So what happens if the property's still not complying, and the city says, well, we'll go clean it up, that would be. Then what is the property owner willing to do? For way long enough, say they're cleaning it up.
Yes.
Will they be spending money, will they be spending energy to clean it up? By way, way down the city, they'll go clean it up. With some people, there are other people, as we'll see in a few minutes, for a little bit different. But then, you know, even to do that, we have to take bids, you know, if it's in the low and moderate income area.
It's a lengthy process, every step is a lengthy process.
It is. If you take one thousand two hundred and fifty-six properties and put them through this whole process.
It's lengthy.
It is. But in my life, we've always been part of processes that we have to go through. So even so, if we use C D P T phones, we gotta go through the whole improvement review and other regulations. And eventually, if you clear down here, to work, the city does it, and then the property owner pays for it and follows it. And then, you know, there's a business. And then, you know, the property, the property owners go, well, I don't need to change my approach against the city. Now, some people, we can contact them, and they will go clean it up. I don't want to say everybody's that way. Because there are people out there, and they know the code enforcement officers out there, and they're saying, you know, your foundation, your grass is too tall, it's low. There are people out there that won't do that. But there are other people out there, you could be one of the state.
It ain't gonna matter.
Still won't do it. Now, we don't have time this morning for you guys to do all of these steps, you know, but I just wanna show you that it's not, it's not this easy. It is not this easy, at all. Even though many people think it is, they get frustrated and get mad at us because they don't think we get on it very well. This is what we have to do. And then we have the gravel truck and these little nasty debris piles that appear over town. The gravel truck service is only for residential properties, okay? Because they're the only people paying for it through their utility bill. And then it must be resident-generated and not the result of remodeling or repair by a contractor. Okay? Yardways such as tree limbs have to be separated from other debris because they go to separate landfills. Okay? The debris goes to one landfill and the tree limbs go out to the paper mill, you know, for them to grind into a paper pole. And then there's a limit of approximately eight cubic yards or less that the gravel truck will pick up. And the gravel trucks are on a designated route during the first three, four weeks of each month. Okay? There is a certain district, certain area, that the gravel truck will travel through and pick up these little debris piles. So, you know, if they set out a debris pile and, you know, and they're the fourth pickup, but they set it out at the beginning of the month, it's gonna sit there for a few weeks. Okay? Until the gravel truck can conserve it in that area. And then commercial properties are responsible for disposing of their own debris. Okay? Again, that's not part of the gravel truck service. And then contractors are also responsible for removing debris from projects at residential properties. And we go through that a lot. You know, they think if it's a residential property, the city will pick it up. No, if it's a remodeling or repair, the contractor is responsible for picking up all that construction debris. So what are the issues with code enforcement? And I'm gonna go back over here. One of the biggest issues is what we call the problem child attitude. It's my property. I can do with them whatever I want. I like the way it is. I won't keep it messy. It's my right to keep it messy. And, you know, it's that anti-government, like I said, we provide that people social responsibility attitude. A lot of people now have, and it seems to be getting worse. And it doesn't help that we have state and national leaders and national networks that promote anti-government, anti-government, anti-government. Because it filters down, okay? It's not just anti-gas, it's anti-gas. It's anti-government. And that includes what we're into with code enforcement. It's my property. I can do with them whatever I want. And then there's more problems, children, that we have code enforcement officers to address all of them. One thousand two hundred and fifty-six. We only have one thousand two hundred and fifty-six code enforcement officers. And then the lack of funds, the initiation of follow-up are the main code enforcement problems. And if we were to go and clean up everybody's pocket, we don't have the funds to do that. And then official code enforcement officer, uh, official code enforcement, that costs money. It's not free. It's a very people-intensive type activity. It requires people with the force and the big technology. Then the lack of citizen council knowledge, education, skills, and code enforcement process. You know, like I said, a lot of people think it's a lot simpler than what it really is. But also I think council, you know, cities in Orange is no different than the Bronx cities. We really don't give you the skills or anything to tell you how to respond to people that are calling, you know, and complaining about properties. You know, what can you say? You know, there might be something that we're gonna explore is just giving the customer skills to deal with people that are complaining about other people and being able to explain why we came out that way and take care of it by that evening.
That would help a lot.
Yeah, to be honest, that's the, really the most that I get attacked for because I can't answer these questions because we don't have the knowledge how that department is functioning. We just don't know.
Right, exactly.
And they expect us to know that. But we can't.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, we're thankful for this because now, now that this is gonna be recorded, we'll, you know, it'll be on YouTube and we can share it and say, if you wanna understand how, when you call us or pull us over at the gas station and think that we can go and get the neighbor's yard fixed by today, this is what it, this is what it is. So thank you.
And also this process charges on the website.
Yep, let's put that on the website.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I don't think he's done yet.
You know, no blame, Orange city staff, or that's not illegal at all. Where council's coming on to the council, whether they're not, or what happened with that one bitch. As far as how do you handle two fingers?
Yes.
It's gonna get frustrating.
Yes.
Really is. But I think that's something both staff and government.
Okay.
Okay, and then the required processes.
They're all lengthy.
You have to give people a chance to correct the violation before you start to fine off.
Yes.
Yes.
And just walk out there, know your grass is thirteen inches tall, get your fines in court.
That's not right.
And then a chance to correct it.
That's correct.
Go ahead.
Oh, he went too fast.
And also, hoarding is a mental health issue. We talked about these debris piles, and these filthy properties and everything. But hoarding is a mental health problem. Those people psychologically have to have all that stuff. Whether they psychologically have to have it.
Yes.
You know, they freak out if you take away from them. Or if we were to go and clean it up, I guarantee you, within a couple of months, it's gonna be about two to three months because psychologically they have to have it.
Yeah.
And I think until you get them over that psychological limit, you know, we're gonna have these hoarding problems and some of these extreme problem problems, people just, all kinds of stuff, and we are in a hoarder problem. And then we also have to think about capabilities in the staff of other departments, especially finance and municipal court. You know, we have to know for bids, you know, the sort of finance issues, the bids, and we've worked with them on developing the bid documents. And then, you know, if we were able to go out and just get in there, maybe with finance, we've got to have the municipal court staff to process it. Okay? All those finances in municipal court, they've got to have, uh, courts and papers can process it, and sort it on the document. And then, you know, administer the forms that the managers serve. Another thing is that code violations are not finite. It's not like we have one thousand two hundred and fifty-six problem properties now. Well, if you work harder, then we'll have a thousand next year. They will have eight hundred following you. They will have six hundred following you. They will have four hundred.
You just don't have that.
It's not finite.
Yeah.
It's not out there.
It changes.
Gain some, lose some, and then there's the receipt of fingers.
Yes.
Like I said, you can beat some people with a stick and they won't comply with the orders because they hate government and it's being reinforced in their life, you know, they hate government. And then, Orange is not blessed with a lot of, mowing is not trying to table for a whole ten or large number of jobs or plus. The properties that we mow, grass is high, it's not finite, thirteen inches. It's not top poor, it's not front lawn, it's tough weeds, and you don't know what's there.
What's in there.
You know? And so contractors, you know, we advise them to watch the property before they mow it because we don't want them turning out their property there, equipment. We don't want them to turn their equipment, because they imagine it's us who make the properties. And also violators are starting to be creating, and one of the things they do is they've done both city property or other property. They're killing people for morale. They've cleaned up a whole lot, substandard properties of the morale, not to cater to that one neighborhood at any party. We've cleaned up a whole lot. So what have they done?
They dump it.
They're bringing it in the middle of the street with you.
Yes, they do.
In the middle of the night.
Yes.
And then that's the city's property.
Absolutely.
You don't clean up. Or somebody done a bunch of tree limbs, so for another stuff on the college property, or we give it a big cleanup.
That's beautiful.
And then people have done tree limbs on their property that they E D C on, that they miss it, they saw it sit. So people are figuring out, well, if I get killed because my property is, you know, approaching them to whatever, other city, but then I throw out the other city property. And it's the city's responsibility. So people, violators are not done. They never make that mistake that they're done.
Right.
They can be very, very brave, but very, very smart. They just don't use it in any productive, positive way.
Right.
Okay? And then some people literally lack the funds to come out, to have the property cleaned up. And they don't really, they may be say, well, they may be battling a serious life-threatening illness. They literally don't have the funds. And, uh, and the problems, if somebody is dying from terminal cancer, the city's not gonna handle it over their yard.
No.
No, the city doesn't operate that way. You know?
Right.
And if they're elderly and they're not visiting company, they literally came and voted, they liked it. And they just don't have the money to do it. And try to work with it, improve it, and keep working on doing it. And as long as people work with us, we'll work with them.
Mm-hmm.
And then people, we know how to leave that they're trying to work with us, then we take them steps and we should stop it. And like I said before, some properties have access to the annual water and puppies, put them on the gears. Property owners may live in California, New York, Michigan, Minnesota, wherever, and they don't care. And we're understanding code enforcement officers, they're gonna be, uh, killing the saltation. Okay? So that's a few owners, we go through, you know, we have, uh, you know, those, those, especially the ones in the areas where nobody's taking responsibility, so who do we contact? And then lanes and interest improvement, if those, clearly, as I said, it came to that, don't be successful in this. Then lanes and interest improvement, if there's more from the property's board, they can then not set handle. And people come and pour the cancel, those types of things.
Mm-hmm.
You know, asking if you some about lanes because the lane is more than one property's board.
Right.
And weather, you know, when we were in a hurricane-prone area, you know, and hurricanes, terror property, terror houses, and, you know, sometimes people don't respond to it, get it repaired as quick as they can. And then rain, it's us, you know, we had a really rainy summer.
Yep.
We had a non-usually rainy summer, you know? But we still owe two hundred and ninety-eight millions, and that is. We had a non-usually rainy summer, you know, but we still owe two hundred ninety-eight loans, and that is such a. But had it been a warmer year, we would have done even more. Now, last year, weather operating, we'll do even more because we increased the budget for moving, okay? But this last year, we did two hundred ninety-eight loans. Now, the problem is, if that property was a road, like that's the person complaining about it, they think we didn't do anything. But there's also those ninety-one properties that I talked about last time, there's those K units that were pulled in since twenty sixteen, you know, there's all these signs that we picked up. You know, as we see, that we pull up and totally cold, you know, drive around Orange, and drive around Walmart and see all the signs. There's a huge difference, a huge difference. And then uh, some issues are just simple judgment calls, because when one is a reading, we can't write orders to kind of every single, single white shoe in every single condition. Some of them are judgmental calls, that's true, whether or not they're not, okay, and then it may not be, you know, if a fence is not to be eight inches, eight to twelve. And it's eighteen and quarter inches, is that one, or do you worry about that other kinds of stuff?
No.
It's not. And that's why we rely upon the code enforcement officers and themselves to make those judgment calls, you know, whether or not they're forced. Plus, I have one thousand two hundred fifty cents, and trying to get the horses. And then, like I said, I'm going back and see, uh, competition for code enforcement officer applicants is keen, go on the table on the website, see how many cities are advocating for code enforcement offices. A lot, yep. A whole lot of cities are advocating for code enforcement offices, so we're not alone, so that's the sort of thing we're doing about institutions, that's the way, and that's the market I have for code enforcement offices. And then the final thing is budget cycles, we can run through our loan budget for six months of year, and we're gonna do, but we try to split it out for the whole year. So that people see us move throughout the whole year, cause if we were just to spend a loan budget for the first six months. Then nothing's been done in the second six months, and people are going, well, they're not going anywhere at all.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to do judgment, and then it's kind of icy, you know, one part of the policy is September, because we're sorry for our low on funds and everything, you know, our work properties come up. So that we save it in budget, as we still have to save it in budget, so anyway. What's the bottom line in all of this? The bottom line is that code enforcement is a difficult, complex process involving social, economic, legal, and emotional issues that require time, money, and labor. Very few cities can go out and correct every single code enforcement call, and those that are can be very, very high-income communities. Where there's some code violations in the first place. Because there is, you know, you can keep them and educational levels, and when the code violations, I think there's a direct correlation, sorry to say that way, but. But there really is, just look at the north side of the interstate and the south side of the interstate, the income levels and educational levels, both at the interstate and south of the interstate. But there really is, just look at the north side of the interstate and the south side of the interstate, the income levels and educational levels, both at the interstate and south of the interstate. But funding for code enforcement, it has to be balanced with the needs of the rest of the city, you know, please, fire, library, administration, funding is, you know. You know, it all has to be balanced, and there's always so much money to go pay, and there's always so much to ask.
Man, thank you.
Thank you, Kelvin.
Thank you. That's a great presentation.
Yes.
Great job.
It's not a, it's not a public discussion, it's just a, but we can talk.
I'll be glad to talk to you afterwards.
He can talk to you. I do wanna say thank you, this is something that several have asked about, um, thank you for the detailed explanation of what all goes into it. Um, you know, and I, and I do believe that with all that you have shown us, you know, that there are even other things that are added to how we've gotten to this point, you know? Everybody talks about when Orange was the shit building and all these people were here, I think Orange used to have like forty-nine thousand people, now we're down to eighteen. So abandonment of properties, people just leaving things behind, and then those of us that are here, you know, there are some people who are like, you need to hurry up and get that cleaned up. Well, there needs to be a level of, of uh caring about what we have here. There has to be some people who say, I really do care about my property, I do want my neighborhood to look good, I'm not doing anything today, I'm gonna go help pick up trash on this street. Because we don't have enough resources to do it all each and every day, like I said, the repeat offenders, you go clean something up on Morel or on Alley Payne. And then next week, they dump it again, and so um, we just, I know that I appreciate it, I know council appreciates it. Um, we, we get these complaints every day, you know, then you have people who think that we're not trying to get it done, but I know that we greatly appreciate you. And now that we have something to put out to the public for them to see as well, they understand that we're not hiding how we work this, it's just a very complicated process, so thank you.
And it's, it's a shame that we have so many people that don't have a sense of social responsibility, you know, that it's not just their property, but their community and how their property affects the community. And, and I don't know how this country gets back to instilling more of a social responsibility, you know, but there is just, right now in a culture of me, 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 my, my, mine.
Yeah.
And uh, and that makes it very difficult for code enforcement, and it's been promoted on a state, national, and national networks, you know, it really filters down.
Well, we appreciate it, thank you, thank you, Ms. Jenna, for helping with the presentation, and thank you for your service, I know you're about to head back to another department, but we greatly appreciate you. Hopefully, the code enforcement didn't run you out of there, he was like, I'm on. Okay, on the item eight A, consider an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, amending the code of ordinances, chapter three, building and construction. By adding article three point one eight zero zero, flood-resistant construction, including new floodplain maps. Finding that this ordinance is beneficial to the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date. Repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, establishing a penalty for violation of this ordinance, and making certain findings thereto. First reading was on October twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Knopf.
Yes, sir, this is the second meeting of the ordinance adopting the new floodplain regulations and floodplain maps.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
No.
Mr. Bailey? Okay, we have one no from Mr. Childs. Okay, item eight B, consider an ordinance amending the city of Orange official zoning map, a part of chapter twelve. Planning and zoning of the two thousand revised code of ordinances of the city of Orange, Texas. Changing the zoning classification of an eight point four eight five acre tract or parcel of land located in the Clayborne West survey. Abstract number twenty-seven, Orange County, Texas, being out of and a part of called twenty-one point one eight one acre tract of record. And clerk's file number three two eight four six of the official public records of Orange County, Texas, all in Orange County, Texas. From C two commercial zoning district to IDC Interstate Development Corridor Zoning District. Finding that this amendment carries out the goals and is consistent with the master plan and is beneficial to the health and general welfare of the city. Providing for the official zoning map of the city of Orange, Texas to reflect such change, providing for an effective date, providing for a severability clause. Repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict and making certain findings relative thereto. First reading was November second, two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Knopf.
Uh, the planning and zoning commission recommends approval, and this is the second meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes, thank you, item eight C, consider an ordinance amending chapter twelve, planning and zoning, article twelve point two zero zero zero. Recreational vehicle parks of the two thousand revised code of ordinances of the city of Orange, Texas. By restricting the location of recreational vehicle parks, camps, and campgrounds to properties located adjacent to highway sixty-two. Finding that this ordinance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive zoning ordinance and master plan of the city. Repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date, and making certain findings relative thereto. First reading was November second, two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Knopf.
The planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item eight D, consider an ordinance amending chapter twelve, planning and zoning land use matrix of the two thousand revised code of ordinances of the city of Orange, Texas. By requiring recreational vehicle parks, camps, and campgrounds to be located adjacent to highway sixty-two. Finding that this amendment is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive zoning ordinance and master plan of the city. And is beneficial to the health and general welfare of the city, Mr. Knopf.
The planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Okay, we have a recommendation, any motions?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes. Onto item eight E, consider an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orange, Texas, deleting the code of ordinances, chapter nine, subdivisions, section nine point one one four. Ten pertaining to the length of blocks in a subdivision, finding that this ordinance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the comprehensive zoning ordinance. And master plan of the city, repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date. And making certain findings relative thereto, first reading was November second, two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Knopf.
Uh, the planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Okay, we have recommendations to approve, any motions?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, motion passes, item eight F, consider an ordinance abandoning the surface only of an alley between the second street and third street. And also between Orange Avenue and Cherry Avenue, while retaining a utility easement the length and width of the alley. Repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance to the extent of such conflict, making certain findings relative thereto. Providing a severability clause and providing an effective date, first reading was November second, two thousand twenty-one, Mr. Knopf.
Uh, the planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey? Okay, thank you, Mr. Knopf. First reading, item eight G, consider an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orange, Texas. Amending the code of ordinances, chapter four, article four point one two zero zero. Emergency and non-emergency ambulance services by adding language to include emergency care attendant. As a member of the responding ambulance unit and allow for the senior paramedic on scene to determine the transfer status of the patient. Finding that this ordinance is beneficial to the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing a severability clause, providing an effective date. Repealing all ordinances in conflict with this ordinance and making certain findings thereto, Ms. Brown.
Mayor Council, what Acadians want to do is, is add a, which basically it's an ECA, which is an emergency care attendant. And uh, doesn't, it will not affect the, the, our patient care, but allows them actually to put more medics on the, on the street for us. This, our ordinance is very specific in who can respond, and right now it just says an EMT, which is an EMT basic. There's basically four levels, there's an ECA, an EMT basic, an EMT intermediate, and then a paramedic. The paramedic is still in charge, a paramedic has to respond, uh, and that, but that paramedic can determine then if it's a basic life support, you know, basically an EMT. And an ECA can transport, or if the paramedic actually needs to transport that patient.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from Ms. Brown?
So, would you mind explaining one more time, right now, it's the paramedic that makes the decision? And we're wanting to open this up for?
No, the paramedic always makes a decision on whether, but right now, the way the, the contractor and the ordinance reads is that the paramedic has to transport the patient. And what we're weren't allowed to do is for that paramedic to determine if it can be a, a basic truck that can transport. A lot of our calls are of, you know, I've had a stomach ache for two weeks now, and it's two o'clock in the morning, and now I wanna go to the hospital. And that's just, it's not unique to Orange, it's, you know, that's everywhere, well, there's no need in tying up a paramedic truck when you got, you know, someone down the street that's having a, a natural heart attack. Well, you can keep that paramedic in town to respond to a natural emergency.
Oh, okay.
You know, a lot of people using ambulance, we call them cabulances, and that's what they use them for, because if they don't have a ride, regardless of what their injury is, it can be something minor. They do have a tendency to call ambulance to, to transport them, and a lot of times, they don't need a paramedic in the back of that unit with them, they just need, you know, they just, if they wanna ride.
Another qualified person.
You know, they can get to the hospital that way as well. So it keeps, helps keep more paramedics, you know, in the city for us, but just like, you know, everybody else, Acadian is, is struggling to keep people, you know, employees as well. And so they actually have a program, and there's actually somebody here from Acadian, he might can explain a little bit better, but they will put people through the ECA program, it's just a forty-hour course. Pay them to go through that class, and then if they, if they make the class and everything, then they can actually be hired by Acadian, am I saying that right?
Yes, actually we hire them and then pay for them to go through class, and.
Well, come on, Dan.
I'm coming on now.
Thank you.
So this all started with COVID, uh, whenever the governor gave his mandate that allowed us to use just drivers for trucks, because the amount of available EMTs, paramedics, ECAs across the state dropped. So the numbers I understand is, we'll say in twenty nineteen, about fifty percent of all certified personnel in state of Texas ran at least one call and completed a patient care report. By the end of twenty twenty, twenty-five percent of all certified uh medics in the state of Texas ran a call. So basically, we lost fifty percent of our working force across the state. So that's, that's just a thing, so we have been hiring already and sending uh our drivers through EMT class. So we'll hire them on as drivers, we'll get them on boarded, get them trained, so they can make a check, and they're making money, and as soon as the next EMT comes, the class comes along, we pay them to go to class. In return, they just sign, I think it's a one-year return of service, so they work for us for one year, we waive the entire cost of the class. At that point, if they choose to become a paramedic, we can actually do the same thing, and we will send them through one of our paramedic classes. Or even an outside paramedic class, and we will do a return of service on that same cost. So we'll pay you all the way through paramedic to go to class and to get your certifications, like we, we are trying to rebuild our workforce. In February, that expires, so Acadian decided we're gonna start sending everybody through ECA class so that we can get them on the streets, so they can make a check while they go through class. The city of Orange is very specific, and it does not allow for ECA, so what we could have done in every other district, we had to draw a line at the county and say, hey, you can't come over here. So that's what this is really to address that, so currently, we hire, and if there's an EMT class coming up quick, we'll put them straight through an EMT class, and again, we'll pay them to go to class. Or if there's not an EMT class coming up currently, we'll send them through ECA class, the difference is how long it takes. ECA class, we can be done in a week, there's no clinicals associated with it, that's a national level certification. The EMT class, even our quick version where you're going Monday through Friday, is still gonna take six weeks plus clinicals. So it takes a little longer to get them on the street, our goal is for every ECA we put through class, we're gonna put them through EMT. This is just to, so you can make a paycheck, and then we're gonna elevate you to EMT, cause that's what we really want is double EMT trucks at the least. But this lets us keep trucks on the road and uh hire people as quickly as possible.
But this particular thing that we're talking about today is taken, uh, is giving a senior person the authority to say, you don't need to go to the hospital.
Negative, so what this is, is I'll go back to twenty eighteen, when we negotiated our contract back then, we actually started allowing a paramedic responder to transport by contract at that time. So that's, I'm not sure if you've seen the pickup truck eleven fifty running calls in circles around Orange every single day, that is actually a twenty-four-hour staff, advanced-level provider. So it's actually critical care paramedic and supervisor on that truck twenty-four hours a day, they serve to run nine-one-one calls, they serve the local standalone emergency centers. They carry their own ventilator, their own bipath, their own, everything that you might find in an ICU, they actually carry in their pickup truck.
Hmm.
And the reason they carry all of that is if there's a really critical patient, you're having a heart attack, and you're a key tech, or you're exceptional, I can send them, they can handle any call coming out of there. They can help stabilize you at the facility, and it doesn't matter who I send to transport with them, you have three people on a truck, and they're on the road. In between those calls, they run nine-one-one calls, and the goal is for them to respond, and if the patient just wants an evaluation, doesn't wanna go, they'll get a refusal. They got a refusal, the other ambulance stayed in service, so you still had an ambulance in service no matter what. As of this morning, we had within like thirty minutes, five emergencies drop in the district. That's a, that's a whole lot in a little bit of time over here in Orange, but four ninety is their call sign, they can run a call, help grandma get up off the floor, cause she just slipped, stand her up. Evaluator, she doesn't wanna go, well, that ambulance that was gonna go see grandma actually went to the next call. So now we just doubled our, our responding force. The best comparison I have for our four ninety would be like a battalion chief, cause they're twenty-four hours a day, there's always a supervisor available in Orange, that is something that y'all have that no other district has. Is that twenty-four-hour supervisor flybar, I mean, you have me, but I'm more administrative kind of stuff, they actually run all the calls, they're boots on the ground twenty-four hours a day. They call me about anything, there's a problem. They actually run all the calls. Their boots on the ground twenty-four hours a day. They call me about anything there's a problem for, and they handle emergency management on top of that in some cases. So that's actually a benefit that came since twenty eighteen. This is just moving that forward. So both things, no matter what, when a paramedic gets on scene, my medical director, who tells us what we can and cannot do, says that paramedic's going to do a full assessment on the patient. If it's grandma who fell, and she just tripped and fell, and she twisted her ankle, she doesn't really hurt too bad, but she wants to go get an X-ray. We're not going to give her pain meds. We're not going to start an IV on her. We're not going to do a full cardiac workup on her, because she just, she slipped, missed a stair, went down, her ankle hurt when she fell. She just wants an X-ray to be safe. What we don't want to do is dedicate an M I C U, so a paramedic EMT level ambulance to grandma if we don't have to. A, she's going to get a bigger bill, and B, that paramedic is now transporting whenever we could have downgraded it, a tiered system, downgraded to a double EMT.
Right.
And then they put an ice pack on her ankle and make her really comfortable, take great care of her, take care of her X-ray, and then she comes home, hopefully nothing broken, and everything is good.
Okay, so this frees up your more educated and skilled EMTs to take care of the more serious patients, and then your attendants can just do the minor things. Okay.
The patient goes through the most appropriate level of treatment.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great. That's great.
Sorry, I wrote the detail, but I just want to show them.
Well, we need to be, so us making this decision, we need to.
Yeah.
The order, we're trying to get the ordinance where it matches the, the contract.
I got you. That's great.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey. Thank y'all for explanation. Thank you for the questions. And how can we get that information on our City of Orange page? Because that's a wonderful opportunity for, you know, some of these people who are thinking about going into the medical field, or, you know, doing their CNA already maybe, and they haven't done it in a while, and they want to go forward.
I can get it together for you. Also, we are doing an explorers program for high school kids that we're offering to all of these schools, so they can sign up, and they can sign up at fifteen and sixteen. They can actually clinicals on an ambulance, on a nine-one-one ambulance, and go right out and see if that's for them. If it's not for them, they want to be a nurse, then hey, they got great experience. It's a lot of experience.
Yes, because I'd like to get that to our, uh, school superintendents in this area as well.
And we're really involved with those Cypress already, and, uh, unfortunately, I couldn't make the Bridge City, uh, chamber breakfast this morning, so I was going to talk to the superintendents from Orange Field and, uh, Bridge City, but we are working on getting it into those schools as well.
Awesome.
Have you approached West Orange yet?
That's a good question. I don't run that program.
Okay.
But I will definitely follow up and make sure that we do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine A, final reading, consider a resolution approving an E D C infrastructure grant agreement with three state sellers at forty-seven oh two Tejas Parkway, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three two, not to exceed one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. First reading was October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Dallas.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is the final reading to, uh, after the, uh, grant agreement has been developed. Um, just to remind you, this has grown a little bit. When it was presented, it was right over half a million dollars for their phase one, and, you know, with inflation, and that's just how things go in construction right now. It's gotten quite a bit bigger, um, or in, in numbers. And so they're working through all of that right now, and they're moving forward with their architect, um, and they're getting their, their plans in place. So this is just the final step.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item nine, thank you, Ms. Dallas. Item nine B, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of a two thousand twenty-two Freightliner M two one zero six, truck equipped with M one zero zero L seven two bulk waste loader from Freightliner of Austin, in the amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety thousand. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor. Um, a grapple truck was approved, a new grapple truck in the budget this year, to replace one that's, um, past its life expectancy. However, we only budgeted to lease purchase one. Well, with the supply shortages and the delays in ordering, it's going to take eighteen months or more to get a new grapple truck, and one came available. Another city, um, couldn't budget for it, so we found one if we could commit to it. And so this motion is to approve the outright purchase, not the lease purchase, and sanitation department does have enough reserves to cover that difference. We budgeted around sixty or so for the lease purchase. This whole truck is a hundred and ninety, but we have enough reserves to cover it. Then we'll own the grapple truck outright.
Yeah, wow, okay, great. So no leasing, let's just go by. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item nine C, consider a resolution supporting candidates for the two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-three Board of Directors in the, for the Orange County Appraisal District. Mr. Kuntz.
Mayor Council, uh, a month or two ago, we nominated, uh, Dr. Susan Crockett to serve on this board. Now it's time to actually vote. We could, traditionally, um, each entity votes for a person or two. Uh, we can vote up to five. I recommend that we, we cast all our uh, votes to Dr. Susan Crockett, and, and just a couple of things, if I might may, say, on the, the re, the resolution as presented, it says the, it's for the board for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, is actually for twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two. And we were notified Friday that we actually got a couple of more votes, so instead of the three twenty-eight, we have three hundred and thirty-two. So again, I recommend that we cast them all for Dr. Susan Crockett, three hundred and thirty-two, but you can do what you'd like to do.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to put all three hundred and thirty-two behind Ms. Susan Crockett.
Yep.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and hopefully we get her in there.
Yeah.
She's wonderful.
She is.
Okay, onto item nine D, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Mustang Cat through Buy Board in an amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand for the purchase of a four-one-six backhoe. Mr. Wolf.
And.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, obviously, it's James Ingram.
Yes, Mr. Ingram.
Mr. Wolf's assistant. Uh, we recommend this purchase.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item nine E, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one with P K and R Enterprises, Fry's Landscaping for the Northway Track and Crossing Improvements. Mr. Ingram.
With weather the way it is, we definitely recommend it.
Yeah, they need a few extra days.
Okay. We have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item nine F, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Kenlock Equipment and Supply through Source Will in an amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand for the purchase of a Vector Trailer Mounted Jet Rudder. Mr. Ingram.
Uh, this, uh, particular trailer mount will definitely increase our reaction time to blockages, so we recommend it.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item nine
G.
G, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Beaumont Tractor Company through Buy Board in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand for the purchase of a Kubota Mini Tracoe. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, replacing wired equipment. Definitely recommend it.
We're going to have you up here for a while, from what I see, huh?
And if I may, you know, a lot of this has been passed in the budget, so now we're getting ready to buy it. That's why it seems like we got a whole lot of stuff going on.
Is it okay for me to read all of them?
Yeah, you still got to read them.
Can we just read all of them at one time?
Yes, sir.
No.
No?
Let's read them individually.
All right, we're trying to get it out. That's okay, trying to save twenty minutes. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Salter, second, by Mr. Childs, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I was trying to cut it short.
I know, sorry.
Item nine H, consider a resolution awarding a contract to T Johnson Industries in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety for the S H sixty-two water extension, Texas Don, Texdon to nine seventy-five north. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, this is just the next step in closing the West Loop Water Line, uh, Water Project, so we recommend it.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, thank y'all. We have motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey. Okay, motion passes. Item nine I, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Core in Maine in the amount of sixty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents for sewer hardware. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, we've, uh, developed a very good relationship with these, this company, and we, we would like to continue.
Thank you.
Motion.
Motion.
Can we have a motion from Ms. Salter, second, from Mr. Childs, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Onto item nine J, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Core in Maine in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-five cents for water hardware. Mr. Ingram.
Sir, continuing the relationship, we recommend.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item nine K, consider a resolution rewarding a contract for electrical engineering services to Eagle Project Services Peak Engineering and Epic Engineering LLC to assist the city in its implementation of funding from the U.S. Department of Treasury for the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, all three firms are very well qualified. We definitely recommend.
Okay.
Motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Onto item ten A, discussion and possible action regarding the Beagle lift station improvements. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, uh, upon our research, we found several flaws in the original design. Uh, from there, we're going, we're taking bids out to install a eight-inch main from the lift station on Beagle. Uh, in addition, we're going to upgrade the pumps from two submersible pumps to three above-ground pumps, self-priming, uh, easier to maintain, lasts much longer, move a lot more fluid. Uh, once these additions are accepted, uh, engineering firm will confirm, and I believe that's a little bit later. And it also gives us ability in the future to upgrade those pumps two more times if need be. So we definitely will be able to take on what is actually there and neighboring, uh, neighborhoods and additions.
Awesome. Thank you for this. This is, um, for those who were not here for the several meetings where the entire neighborhood came and voiced their opinion on these issues, um, here it is, not even a month or two months later, and we're working on the solution, so thank you very much for that.
One other thing, we are mobilizing a, a contractor probably Monday or Tuesday of next week to start smoke testing that area to find existing licks so that we can fix them as well.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bailey, I know you were working with that area.
Do you have a time limit on?
A time limit?
Yeah, or approximate time?
Um, I think one of the engineering firms should be announced here in a few seconds. We'll be engineering it. I'm wanting to say we should be able to start construction by the end of January, February, if everything works out right.
Wonderful, great.
All right.
Great to hear.
I'll make a motion.
Well, mayor, we, we don't really need any action on this agenda item.
We're just, yeah, we're ready to act on it.
Yeah, I know, and, and it's about to come in the next one on the resolution.
Okay, good. Okay, eleven A, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter to an agreement with Fitz and Shipman for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand six hundred and fifty for professional engineering services for the Beagle Road Lift Station Upgrade. Mr. Ingram, what you just talked about.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. Here we go, uh, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And twelve A, consider a motion declaring equipment two thousand eight Ford F one fifty and two thousand thirteen Ford F one fifty as surplus and authorizing disposal by auction through Rene Bates Auctioneer. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir, uh, equipment has definitely outlived its life cycle. We recommend that we do retirement auction off.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. I like that suit too, buddy. Item twelve B, consider a motion approving the certification of the two thousand twenty-one current tax roll and the two thousand twenty-one delinquent tax roll as submitted by Karen Fisher, Orange County Tax Assessor Collector. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor, this is just the motion to approve, acknowledge that the tax assessor collector calculated and provided us with the tax rolls. The current tax roll will be nine million twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars, and the delinquent is one million three hundred and ten, three nineteen.
Okay. All righty. And that's, a lot of work goes into that for them, so we appreciate them. Okay, we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zito. Item twelve C. Consider a motion canceling the November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one and December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one regular city council meetings, Mr. Kunst.
Mayor, Council, traditionally, we counsel, uh, cancel the regular meeting right before both Thanksgiving and, and near Christmas, so staffs are willing to meet, if y'all want to meet.
Happy holidays.
Make a motion.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey? Okay? And report, city manager report?
Like to wish Happy Veterans Day to all my, uh, brother and sister veterans, and thank you to those families and friends who supported us over the years. Happy Veterans Day.
Okay. City council report, starting at my left, Mr. Burge?
Um, yes, I, I want to thank Kelvin for making that presentation, it's very helpful.
He had a great job.
I want to add to, um, the Toy Coffee this year, uh, is the first Thursday in December.
At your house?
At my house, yes. Um, people that don't know what Toy Coffee is, um, the Service League of Orange partners with Salvation Army, and they pick a house, and the house goes on tour, and then when you come to the house, you bring a a new toy that's not wrapped, um, or a donation, and you tour the house, and you get something, um, from the Service League. So these toys go for the needy in Orange County. So it's a big thing that we try to, to, um, push, so that is December the second, which is first Thursday in December. And a new thing that they're, they're doing this year is, is usually from ten to two, but they've added an evening, so it's ten to two, and then again from five to seven for people that work or kids that go to school that don't get to, to go, so let's try to, um, support this. As for the children.
The address?
Seven oh three North Eighth Street, December second.
The last time I was at Mr. Burge's house, they exceeded all previous year's earnings, which was, what, over fifty years?
Yes. Yeah.
So.
It was really nice.
It's for the children, so let's do what we can for them.
Thank you, Ms. Henigan?
All right, so thank you, Mr. Kunst, for your service this Veterans Day.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't have any report.
No report, okay, Ms. McKenna?
Um, thanks for your service and all the people who have, I appreciate it, Happy Veterans Day. Um, and let's support the Toy Coffee, and hospice has our annual toilet paper tea. We're going to do it this year, uh, December ninth. Come and, uh, have some refreshments and see our dove tree and bring some toilet paper, so you're all welcome.
And what's the time?
Ten to two.
Ten to two.
Okay, Ms. Salter?
Uh, no report.
Okay, Mr. Childs?
No report.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
No report, happy holidays.
All right, no report. So happy holidays to everyone, um, thank you, Mr. Knopf. Over and over and over again, I know we
Great job.
We, we appreciate it, because even though we're not going to be able to remember everything, we can also direct people where they can come and see how this works, and so that people will understand, it's not like we're ignoring their concerns, it's just that it's a detailed, long-drawn-out process. So I thank you for that. Um, there's a lot of things that I want to touch on real quick, but I'm going to make it really, it's one small thing. There's a lot of things that are going on right now in the city of Orange, there's a lot of projects. Public Works alone, I can't even tell you how many millions of dollars of projects you have going on. Um, there's developers who are in town that are working on projects, like the new lift station and the businesses. With all that that is going on, I do want to ask council, as well as citizens in the community, in this Home Rule Charter book, section three point one five, what it asks is, is that myself as mayor, us as city council members, and the community, we need to make sure that we are not going directly to staff with issues.
Yes.
The proper procedure is for us to go through Mr. Kunst as city manager and Jay Trahan as assistant city manager. The reason for that is this, there's an order that is established, and it is established so that we work properly. If we start bringing things and wanting to show up at somebody's office or calling them and saying, hey, what about this? They take their direction from their department head, which reports to Mr., uh, Kunst, and then we as a city council and as mayor, we help give direction for the entire city. If we start to break that, we start to confuse things and mess up the order of how this is supposed to work. So let's please remember to follow this. If you need a copy of it, we got like several copies up there, I believe, too, but let's make sure we follow that, because as we are getting super busy, which we are already, we need to make sure that we're doing what's right and following procedure, because as many of you can see, the last two years, this council has not asked for any new projects. We haven't. But in doing what God has called us to do, putting him first, look at how all these developers and people are showing up, because we're giving staff time to do what we started. So thank you, staff, for all that you have done. I know we will have one more meeting to close out the year. I do want to say thank you for all of your hard work and for the things that you are doing in the city. You know, there are some that don't like what we're doing, or that may say, you know, we could be done differently, we'll then run. You can run for this position, and, uh, you can have a spot in here and see how it really works. And I do believe that we are doing what God has called us to do, and I thank y'all. So with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you. Yay.